Everyone that today's meeting is being live streamed on the Leeds City Council YouTube channel, so that the public can observe the meeting without needing to be present. North and East Plans Panel deals with applications from the north, east and the east of the city. The aim of the panel is to hear all the relevant information from applicants, members of public and council officers to help members of the panel to make their decision. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you have introduced yourself? If I could start from my left, John?
Hi, my name's John Hall. I'm a town planner at Leeds City Council. I deal with affordable housing applications.
David Jones, team leader for the east area.
Good afternoon, I'm Lisa Brannan, Highways.
Good afternoon, Nicole Sharp, I'm a councillor in the Temple News and Ward.
Afternoon, everyone. Emma Flint, councillor in Wheatwood Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Morale, Julie Kibbax and Matthew Ward.
Good afternoon, it's councillor David Jenkins, representing Kellybach and Sycroft Ward.
Councillor Paul Ray from Huntsland Riverside Ward.
Hi there, Hannah Bethel, representing Kirkstall.
Good afternoon, Sarah Holmes, Senior Technical Officer, part of the Plans Panel Team.
Good afternoon, Daniel Lema, Senior Technical Officer, part of the Plans Panel Team.
Hello, everybody. Ryan Stevenson, councillor for Hereward Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Trish Smith, representing Pudgey Ward, and today I'm subbing for Alan Lamb.
Good afternoon, Janice Bally, Anderson, Adam Wolf, Taylor Ward.
Hey, everyone. Natasha Prosser, clerk to the panel.
Good afternoon, Pippa Plumtree, Valley, Principal Legal Officer and Legal Advisor to the panel this afternoon.
Hello, David Newbury, Lead Planning Officer for the Plans Panel.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you councillor Smith for subbing this afternoon. Moving to the agenda, could I ask the clerk to go through each item, sorry, agenda item number one to five?
Thanks, Chair. Agenda item one, there's no appeals against refusal of inspection of documents. Agenda item two, there's no items which require the exclusion of the press and the public. Agenda item three, I'm not aware of any formal items of business. Agenda item four, can members declare any interest?
Thank you, Chair. In relation to item eight, I am a non-executive director of the Academy Trust, which has interest in land bordering the site. It's not a pecuniary interest, but I think it's worth recording.
Okay, thank you. We made the note of that. Item number six, minutes of the previous meeting held on the 25th of August 2022. Do members accept these minutes are a true and correct record? I'll assume correct unless indicated. Otherwise, are members happy to move these? Councillor Flint, yeah? Anyone to second? Councillor Ray, thank you. Are there any matters arising? Take care, no? Thank you. Item seven, which will be presented by John? Yeah?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, to start, okay. Just. Okay, I just want to start off by saying I very slightly reordered the PowerPoint presentation, updated a couple of photos, so apologies for this, but it won't perfectly match the slides in front of you. However, I'm hoping it's easy enough to follow. So the proposal is for a five-storey apartment building containing fifty-eight affordable units with associated parking and landscaping areas on land at Railway Street, next to the Saxton Gardens Estate in the Bermentofs and Richmond Hill Ward. The applicant is Leeds and Yorkshire Housing Association. The application was presented at the 30th of June Plans Panel as a position statement. Since then, amendments have been made. The application is now presented with a recommendation to defer and delegate to the Chief Planning Officer for approval, subject to conditions and the completion of a section 106 agreement. So I'll begin by reintroducing the scheme. Hope to, oh, there we go. So this slide shows the application site plus wider area. It lies just to the east of the city centre and to the north of the Saxton Gardens Estate. The area is expected to see significant growth over the next few years, as illustrated by this slide, which shows recent planning approvals. The sites shown here are for residential blocks ranging from six to twenty-two stories. In total, the four schemes will deliver 1,865 units. This is a zoomed-in aerial view of the site. The development will be built on the cleared site of the former Yorkshire Riders Sports and Social Club and an area of green space. There is an energy centre connecting into the district heating network to the north-west, the railway viaduct to the north, green space which includes playground to the east and the Saxton Garden apartment blocks to the south. Now, this slide is helpful as it shows the amount of green space which would be lost as a result of the development. So existing on the, on the left and proposed development shown on, on the right of that, that slide. This is a photo of the site looking toward the cleared site of the social club. And these next photos won't be in your information pack as they're only taken over the weekend. But you can see that construction work on the neighbouring apartment scheme is well underway. The building shown here will be stepped in height with the red and grey part rising to twelve stories and the white part to eighteen stories. And this is a, maybe a clearer view of the, of the new building that's going up. So the building itself will be constructed of a buff, light red and dark red brick, and there'll be floor-to-ceiling windows with Juliet balconies giving the building a contemporary appearance. The varied elevation form and angles add interest to the area and break up the massing and bulk of the building. On the design, we received positive comments from both the council's design team and Leeds Civic Trust. This is the layout plan which was presented at the 30th of June position statement. In terms of the general arrangement, the building would be orientated north-south and includes private gardens for the ground-floor flats and a shared area of private amenity space for the upper-floor apartments. Let's see if I can.
Work the pointer.
Oh, I'm having difficulty with that, but the, the amenity space is just to the, just to the west of the, of the building. Vehicle access would be from Railway Street to the north with parking set, set alongside the energy centre. The proposal includes a footpath across the green space to provide a north-south link for residents. At position statement, member views were sought on four key planning issues. They included the loss of green space, pedestrian connectivity, private amenity provision and housing mix. I'll go through each in turn and update members on what changes have been made. I'll first address the loss of green space. At position statement, panel members were asked whether the wider planning benefits and proposed green space improvements justified the loss of existing green space. To recap, the wider planning benefit was the hundred percent affordable housing provision and green space improvements included repairs to the existing footpath along the northern boundary of Saxton Gardens and, and the installation of a metal rail on the Flax Place frontage and an eleven thousand pound commuted sum to be spent on further green space improvements in the area. Members considered that the above did justify the loss of green space and so no further action has been taken. The second issue around, was around pedestrian connectivity. At position statement, it was reported that Highways team objected to the application because they wanted to see greater levels of connectivity and specifically asked for the footpath on the south side of Railway Street to be extended to the junction with Eastfield Street. I'll just have another go to see if I can point this, point this out. It's not showing anything, but you can see the footpath along the south of Railway Street and, and Highways asking for that to be extended to the northeast corner. So panel members were therefore asked whether they agreed that further connections were required and if so, whether this was best achieved by extending the footpath in line with Highways' request. Members agreed the footpath was needed and stressed that it should be an integral part of the scheme. Officers have held further discussions with the applicant and they have agreed to the footpath extension. The third issue was the private amenity provision. Although the ground-floor flats have their own private gardens, the layout plan showed a relatively small area of amenity space for the upper-floor residents. The council's Neighbourhoods for Living SPD advises that, as a general guide, the private amenity provision for flats should comprise a minimum area of twenty-five percent of the total gross floor area. On the layout plan, the amenity space for the upper floors only equated to eight point eight percent of the total gross floor area. It was reported at position statement that officers had asked the applicant to consider installing balconies and/or a roof garden to provide greater levels of private amenity space. However, officers were told this wasn't possible due to costs and housing management safety concerns. When asked whether the proposed private amenity provision was acceptable, members' response was that additional efforts should be made to look at the design and provide as much space as possible. In line with this, the private amenity provision has been extended with the revised plan showing the shared area now representing fifteen point three percent of the total gross floor area. This has been achieved by reconfiguring the parking, which has included removing four car parking bays. Highways team have confirmed the loss of parking spaces is acceptable. Although the private amenity provision is still under the recommended twenty-five, twenty-five percent of total gross floor area, officers consider the revised scheme does offer a reasonable level of shared amenity space. The proposal also allows quick and easy access for residents into the adjoining green space via two security gates located to the south. This relationship helps to provide some level of mitigation for not achieving the twenty-five percent amenity space since the green space can also be used for recreation and amenity purposes that require more space. So this is, as you can see here, this is the revised layout plan. It's showing the greater levels of private amenity space plus the footpath extension. This is a photo, just showing location of where the, the new footpath would run to. And this slide just highlights the uplift in private amenity space. So what was presented at position statement is on the left and you can see sort of there's much more meaningful area of amenity space on, on the right-hand side. And again, this was a, a three D image presented last time. We showed that smaller area of amenity space and that's been updated and this is the, the revised three D image showing the new, the new area of, of amenity space. The final issue was the proposed housing mix. At position statement, the proposal was for twenty-eight one-bed, twenty-five two-bed and five-three-bed units. This did not meet the council's preferred housing mix as set out in table H4 of the core strategy. This is because it under-provides on three-bed units. The application only proposes five-three-bed units when the preferred minimum target is eleven. Members were asked whether the proposed housing mix was acceptable. Members stated that the proposal should include additional three-bed flats and that the ground-floor flats could be utilised for three beds. Further discussions have taken place, however, the applicant has confirmed that the proposed mix will not be altered. The reason cited that there is a strong demand for smaller units in the local area that is also unmet and also that altering, altering the scheme presents design, costs and efficiency difficulties that cannot be resolved. Although the lack of movement on the housing mix is disappointing, officers consider the benefit of achieving a hundred percent affordable housing outweighs this concern. The applicant has submitted data to demonstrate that the proposal would still be addressing a demand in the area, even though they are not achieving the preferred housing mix. The submitted data is taken from Leeds City Council's housing growth team's demand data from November 2019, which identifies that the affordable housing requirement for Richmond Hill is sixty-eight one-bed, forty-two two-bed, thirty-two three-bed, nine-four-bed and one-five-bed. Outside of these four planning issues, no other major concerns have been identified. The building has been subject to wind assessment and details of landscaping, drainage and land contamination will be secured by condition. It's worth noting that although the position statement focused on the four planning issues outlined above, members did make other suggestions, including increasing the number of units by making the building taller. This was discussed with the applicant, but they confirmed it wasn't something they would consider. Their model is to build a five-storey building. Anything taller would lead to significant rise in costs and management issues. To summarise, the applicant has submitted a revised layout which seeks to address member concerns. The updated scheme includes a greater level of private amenity space achieved through reconfiguring the parking area and extending the footpath. However, there's been no change on the housing mix. Nevertheless, the planning officer's assessment is that whilst the proposal does not conform with the preferred housing mix as set out in Core Strategy Policy H4, this policy is deliberately worded to offer flexibility and the wider benefits associated with the scheme outweigh this consideration. The wider benefits being the hundred percent affordable housing provision with all units capped at social rent, i.e. they will generally be affordable to households in the lower decile of earnings. In terms of letters of representation, we received comments from Leeds Civic Trust, who were supportive, and two members of the public, who were concerned around the traffic impact, spending of the commuted sums, loss of green space, lack of community facilities and a level of public consultation. No objections have been raised by ward members who have been informed of the changes since position statement. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I, I will be inviting the, we've got the couple of speakers, one against and one for. But before I do so, can I remind members, accordance with the protocol for the public speaking at the Plans Panel, members of the public are in attendance to speak to the panel. After they have spoken, I will invite members of the panel to ask questions of speakers, to clarify matters of fact, and these questions should be limited to relevant planning issues. I will then invite officers to clarify any matters arise to point out a consideration raised, raised in this discussion, but which are not material to determine the application when, when in the discussion, but which are not material to, sorry, already, you have four minutes to ask any questions, present your case. So can I invite the objector, please? You've got four minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm David Mackey, a local resident. I've been involved with the community leadership team in the ward and I have consulted Facebook groups with around one thousand and sixty, one thousand seven hundred and fifty local residents as members about this project. Overall, I'm a bit disappointed with this proposal. I've consulted with residents locally and I feel that if there had been a competition about what to do with one of the last remaining public spaces in Saxton Gardens, this would not have really been the winning entry. I feel that some of the community amenity that was lost with the disappearance of the community club should be offset in the new building, whether through a gym that people in Saxton Gardens could subscribe to, a community cafe or a community meeting room. Secondly, I feel that some of the processes that are used by Leeds City Council are excluding community views from the planning process. It's possible for a proposal to go a very long way before the community is able to give an initial position on the development and community ideas only get listened to and taken on board if there's a decision-maker willing to listen to them. Thirdly, I feel that the financial amount devoted to offsetting the loss of diversity through planting and/or a green wall is derisory and doesn't reflect the true land values of a land being given away. Whilst the local community can try and create a new pocket park after the event using funding from the incinerators, it would be better if it was all one project that was such centrally managed and properly funded. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? I take it as no. Thank you very much, sir. Can I now invite the supporter for this, this application, please?
Good afternoon, councillors. Good afternoon, Chair. My name's Gareth Jackson from Bruce to Architects. We are the architects of the scheme and sat beside me is Oliver Corbett, who's the planning, planning consultant on the scheme as well. He's deputising for Joanna Chambers, who is the client representative. Unfortunately, she can't be here today. We are here really to answer questions that you have regarding the application.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Chair. It may be you guys, it may also be officers that need to weigh in. It was mentioned in the opening that you guys don't see there to be a need for more three-beds in the area because of there not being the demand. Now, I guess this housing association usually goes into the housing, the Leeds housing bidding system. So I'm just wondering whether you've got the housing lists with the numbers available to share so we can also see that there's evidence that we don't need three beds or more three beds. Thank you.
Yes, I just happen to have that very information here in front of me. Yes, there's a distinction on the demand for three beds. There is a demand for three beds in the area, but what the bid information clearly shows us is the demand is for three-bed houses and three-bed maisonettes, whereas the provision here is three-bed apartments and the demand for three-bed apartments is actually quite low in the area. The preferences for houses and maisonettes generally is families who want, you know, a bit of a garden or, you know, sort of the, the connection to the ground that you would normally get in an apartment building. So, for example, here, the, the, in terms of flats, now this is, this is purely flats. The number of bids per property sat in the Bermentoff wards for twenty-one to twenty-two, according to housing leads. So there's a demand for three hundred and twenty-seven one-bed flats, one hundred and fifty-seven two-bed flats and forty-three bed flats. So the provision, given that this is an apartment building, effectively reflects that and if anything, it's maybe slightly up on the three beds in, in proportion to the, to the two and the ones. But we take your point. There is a demand for three beds, however, it is an accommodation set that's not been provided in this development.
Are you okay with that, councillor Bethel? Do you want to come back? Okay, councillor Ray?
It's just following on from the same question. Two points. This is right on the border between three wards. It's on the border between Bermentofs and Richmond Hill, Little London Woodhouse and Huntsland Riverside. So it's rather selective to use one ward's data and so why is that the case that's being used? And secondly, don't, I can say this with a huge amount of confidence bearing in mind the type of ward I represent. Families do move in to flats now, particularly around the city centre area because of its closeness of amenities and access. So are you saying that the clientele that particularly rents from you, bearing in mind they are rent, as, as my colleague said, from the bidding system somehow has an aversion to flats?
I just come in on that one. Yeah, the, the data we've got is, is that there is across the board, just a lower demand for multi-story, three-bed apartments. As, as we sort of said, it is the data from, from the ward the site's in. But that's, that's the data we've got available to us. And I think there is quite a significant demand for one and two beds, which we, we do want to emphasise. We are meeting quite a lot of that demand in this one scheme. Although it can't deliver the, you know, the preferred mix of three beds, I think it does, it does meet a balance of the, the total level of demand across the board.
Sorry, that's not really answering my question, which is why have you selectively chosen the Bermentofs and Richmond Hill information, bearing in mind that this is on the border of three wards, particularly three wards which have a high level of deprivation and need for three beds for families? Why have you selectively chosen one ward's data and not looked at the entire picture of the three wards?
Whilst the, the client body isn't here to, to give you probably a more comprehensive answer than I can, my understanding is that the, the consultation in terms of the housing mix that we had to provide and that was advised was by housing growth and housing leads was based on Bermentofs. As, whilst you say it is, is on the border, it is within Bermentofs. And that's, that's the data we've been given. That's the data they work to. You know, there, there may be questions to ask beyond this meeting to, to address.
I won't be coming back, but I will be asking officers that very question as well. So I would hope they'll be prepared to, if that's possible, please, Chair, because it's a, a significant oversight when it's on the border of three wards.
Okay, councillor Bethel?
Thanks. I guess my question is around the split between therefore private garden. How many private garden three-bedroom properties are there? And if we're looking at people aren't as interested or there's less uptake for three beds that don't have a private garden, then what we're actually looking at there is two separate sorts of three-bed properties because you've got some with a garden, some without. So actually, the idea will be though, those with three beds and a private garden will kind of come on to the ones that the data you've just given us doesn't cover because they'd be the ones where they, they would just as easily be in-house as an apartment-type situation because they've got the amenities you've mentioned. So actually, if we're using the data that says it's only the flats and there aren't very many people that use three-bedroom flats, therefore we should only be doing like-for-like. So therefore your housing mix of your three bedrooms actually is kind of two sets and we need to be looking at the statistics of that because there'd therefore be less that would play into that forty three-bedroom flats than the whole lot. I guess for me, I, I get an awful lot of, I'm not in Bermentofs or Richmond Hill, but I get an awful lot for three-bedroom flats and it's only getting worse. And I don't think that personally, I really struggle with the idea of putting something through that is not going to meet the needs of those people that, in my opinion, at the moment are most at risk. So I want to make sure, and the reason I'm asking it as a question is so that you guys have the opportunity to kind of dissect that a little bit for me, rather than me just stating it and it moving on. Thank you.
Do you want to come back to councillor Bethel?
Yeah, certainly. Like I say, I mean, I think, you know, the client body would be better served to, to, you know, to give the, the reasoning behind the mix. To answer your original question, there are five three-beds proposed here, one of which will have an external garden. There were a number of two beds that will have an external garden as well. In the previous meeting, we, we did, we were asked to look at whether we could get more three beds up the ground floor to, to make benefit of that space. So as an exercise, we did undertake, but what we found was in the nature of the building, the constrained nature of their site is as we were putting three beds in the ground floor, we were displacing other flats. So basically for every two, three beds we provided at ground floor, we'd lose a one-bed flat because effectively what we had to do was split a one-bed into half and give each half to two beds out the side. So, and if we did that on both sides, we were losing two flats and the scheme just doesn't stack up financially. It's marginal in terms of viability now, but doing that and effectively increasing the number of three beds in the scheme, whilst it would meet that, it, it, it wouldn't be viable, unfortunately, you know, we, the rental loss and loss of two-bed, you know, two-one-bed apartments at ground floor would just, you know, obviate the scheme, unfortunately.
Councillor Flint?
Thank you. I just wondered what your response would be to the resident who spoke earlier, who's obviously got kind of local knowledge and has spoken to a lot of people in the area about whether there is scope to provide any space for the community. So just what your response to him would be and a, and then just a simple question of how many parking spaces are left? If that's what's been lost for, obviously it's great that there's more communal garden, but how many parking spaces are left?
Yeah, so the, you know, the site is, is allocated for, for housing development and, and that's what's being brought forwards. The, the problem we've got is there isn't a requirement to deliver a community facility on this site. You know, we do acknowledge there was a, a facility there, but it's, it's been gone for a number of years and to, to viably deliver that on this site, you know, it would mean losing the provision of affordable housing on a site that's appropriate for it. It does contribute to improvements of the play area to the east of the site. But in terms of delivering additional facilities, it's, it's not something that, again, stacks up really with a, quite a marginal site where the, the real aim is delivering that hundred percent affordable and meeting that demand. And I'll just hand over on the parking question.
Thank you. In terms of parking across the site, we now have eighteen car parking spaces, two of which are to the full BS eighty-three hundred accessible parking bays for the M43 flat and one of the M42 flats. There are two motorcycle bays on the site. There are fifty-eight cycle. We've got cycles of fifty-eight cycles effectively within the building and we also have four visitor cycle spaces outside and they're covered as well.
Council Smith?
Thank you. I happened to be subbing the last time this was brought before us as well. So it's quite fortuitous for me. I'm going to go back to the three-bed requirement. And I asked the question, could you lay the ground floor out, put a slab and then build up from that slab? So I'd like to know the answer to that one, please, because I believe it got put in the too difficult box. And I'd also like to know what rent you'll be charging for the one-bed, the two-bed and the three-bed, please. Ballpark's fine, but I just want to see what the differential is. Because my suspicion is that the three beds aren't viable for you because they aren't going to be that much higher. And I think that's possibly why you've gone down the one and two-bed route. Now, this area is a family-orientated area and we do need three-bed accommodation all around the city. And as my colleague has said, this area borders on three wards, but people move around the city all the time. And three-bed accommodation is in very short supply. So I believe that there is a need for the three beds. I believe that it isn't too difficult to build the ground floor, put a slab on and then build up from there. And so I'd just like your thoughts on that, please. Thank you.
Like a councillor. Again, like I say, we looked at introducing more three beds at ground floor. We've also, you know, separately to the scheme and on the scheme as well, you know, we've looked at the possibility of putting all the three beds at ground floor and then having a different layout above. And what that, I mean, technically what that requires is you put a transfer slab in because you have a completely different structural regime at ground floor to what you have at first floor and above. And that's fine if you're doing a twenty-story building, because transfer slabs are expensive to do. They are big pieces of construction. They're a metre-thick solid concrete. And would you do it on, you know, if this is an eighteen-story building, probably think of doing it. But it's a five-story building, the economies of scale just aren't there to do it, unfortunately. But also, if we're adding a metre to the height of the building, which we'd need to do in order to get the accommodation to ground floor, then we've got to meet it. And then we've got to get the accommodation above. You know, we're pushing everything up a metre and we're already constrained at the height of the building because of, A, because of fire regulations, if we start going over eighteen metres, then we're looking at a different fire regime. But ultimately as well, we're pushing ourselves within the plume modelling, the plume for the for the energy-centred chimney as well. So we're just starting to push ourselves into a margin that we'd rather not be in. There's other mitigations as well. So it's not just the cost of a transfer slab. We think on balance, given the size of the scheme, given the accommodation, give the marginality of the viability of the scheme, then that kind of measure doesn't really pay for itself. And it's, you know, and it's a big difference, you know, it, you know, it changes the design, changes the mix. It still makes it inviable because we're putting our three beds downstairs. And, you know, we can't, and we're therefore losing flats in order to do that as well. So on balance, given the size of the building and just looking at it holistically, effectively, it doesn't seem a measure that we would feel would be beneficial to the scheme overall. Whilst the intention is clear. I think that and allied to the fact as well that we feel that the mix and rather the client feels that the mix represents what we get in terms of bids for the area that I mentioned earlier. Then I think on balance that what we have is probably closer to what's achievable. If I can also address the rental question on rents as well, I'm probably not best qualified to answer in terms of the income that would need to come from the client body themselves. But our understanding is that, yes, there's a marginal increase in the rent received from the three-bed to one-bed or a two-bed. But I couldn't tell you what that was to properly answer your question. So apologies for that.
Council Smith, before you come in, can I just remind members, if you can just stick to the questions, please, rather than long statements, if possible?
Thank you. Regarding the plume issue, I think we discussed this last time as well. And I think it was more you didn't want to go any higher rather than anything else. Because we discussed that the plume, the wind changes, so the plume could be in any direction. And immediately behind is another taller building. So I kind of disregard that, actually. But I do think that, you know, you've put it back in the too difficult box.
Do you want to respond to that?
I think we responded as best as we can really to that question. You know, I don't think there's anything more to say. I mean, you know, if you, we could talk about the plume modelling, we've studied it, we've had to study it. You know, it demonstrates to us that the building is downwind, it's, you know, the prevailing wind takes that plume across the front of our scheme. The schemes beyond it aren't as affected, but ours could be. And we don't want to put residents and our clients, clients at risk.
Thank you. I can't see anyone else showing wish to ask any more questions. So thank you very much for your time. And now, any questions for the officers? Council Ray?
I think I already told them in advance. I want to know why we've accepted a model based on one ward when it's on the edge of three wards. And as colleagues have said, actually, the bidding system, unless there's a local plan requirement in it, is citywide. And there is significant demand. All of us are getting demands for three-bed properties for families or for adults who are caring for other adults, et cetera. So why does the council seem to think, or the planning department seem to think that this is worthwhile to lose when there's a clear demand for it?
Agreed. I mean, I think it's important to know that officers aren't making a recommendation based on the fact that the applicant has satisfactorily demonstrated to us that there isn't a demand for three-bed flats. I think actually deliberately the report doesn't refer to house type. We acknowledge that there is a demand for three beds in the area. And as well as a demand for one and two beds. I think the question is, for officers, it was a case of the planning balance. And whether the fact that it's all affordable outweighs the fact that they're underproviding on three beds. So I, it didn't form part of the assessment. That's not the justification for approving this. It is a question of planning balance.
So this is a follow-up question, and I think Council Biffle raised this. And I appreciate the comments about the plume. And I appreciate there's obviously a prevailing wind direction for most of the time. Obviously, the surrounding buildings have made an assessment because they're much higher. They're not exactly a million miles away from the potential wind direction. And I think we made quite clear at this last panel that we thought this site was actually being underdeveloped. So what were the conversations around that? Because this site can clearly take more. And for completely understandable reasons for the developer, because they don't want to get into the enhanced fire regulations of buildings above eighteen metres, where basically say, go for a smaller building because it's easier for you rather than supplying the demand and the intensity that this site can take, which we probably wouldn't do on other sites. So why is the planning authority seem comfortable to have this site underdeveloped when it can quite clearly take more?
Yeah, we did have those discussions. I understand if they were to build tall, it could be done, of course, it could be done. But there needs to be a greater level of mitigation, I think, the non-opening windows and expensive ventilation system. I think for officers, again, there was no policy requirement for them to go taller. I mean, this is the scheme that's being presented to officers. And although we've asked them to consider providing more units and going taller, they were adamant that that's something that they wouldn't consider. So again, it was the planning balance. And, yeah, which is why officers came to the view that because it's hundred percent affordable, we would still support the scheme.
To one final question, I'd like a legal opinion then in regard to this. In terms of our determination as a panel, if we feel a site is being underdeveloped, do we have scope under planning regulations and law to actually say, actually, we think there should be more here and therefore we don't want to give, we give, we, I suppose, we consent in principle to the site being developed, but we don't believe this is the right plan for the site. Do we have scope to do that as members on this panel?
So the principle of the site being developed for residential is already really established anyway. So that is before you, but you are determining just this application and the proposal that the applicant is bringing. And it really does go beyond the scope of what even an officer could propose a condition for to deal with that, that you think there needs to be more units. Because that would change the nature of the application being determined entirely and is not what's before panel today.
Yeah, I'll just echo what Pippa said, but the other point probably to raise is a policy that we would judge it against would be our density policy, which from memory I think is H three. And the density of this development goes well beyond that policy requirement. So that'd make it even more difficult for us to argue that it's an underdeveloped site because it exceeds the policy requirements in that respect.
Could David, Council Bithelod?
Thank you. In terms of, so obviously taking into consideration the fact that it's a hundred percent affordable, do we keep a note or keep a log of the number of units of three-bed in a wider area? I'm thinking, is there some affordable stuff going through that kind of compensates for it? That has a lack of one and two beds that kind of, like on a wider citywide level, equals it out to meet policy? Or is that not something we actually check? Obviously, I'm new to panel, so I might just be wrong.
I'll just try and help there. I think as the team leader for the east area, obviously, we go out in wedges. So deal with lots of planning applications from the volume house builders. And the presentation you're going to receive after this is another example for the middle quadrant. What you do find really on with the volume house builders in particular, they tend to deliver lots of houses and not many flats. And so within that context, proportionally on those other sites, you tend to get significantly less flats. And by default, you get lots of two and three-bed units in terms of affordable provision.
Council Bithelod?
Thanks, Chair. But they're, from what I can gather, they are different in that affordable doesn't mean social rent. And these are specifically social rent. Affordable is just fifteen percent less than market value, isn't it?
The mix is sixty-forty, so you do still get the social rent as well provided as part of that.
Council Stevenson?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I can't find the right paragraph. Is this an allocated site in the SAP? And if so, how many units was it allocated for? I should know that. But and the second question was, in terms of the reasons for approval or refusal, I think the report acknowledges that the housing mix proposed does not meet the policy requirements. So if panel determined today that we were going to refuse this based solely on that, would that be a defensible position subject to an appeal?
Yeah, on your first question, it's not a housing allocation within the SAP. And on the second question, it doesn't conform with the preferred housing mix. But the table that I showed, that I brought up in the presentation is taken from the core strategy and that's table H four. But that doesn't form part, that's not actually part of the policy itself. So I think it's, the policy is deliberately worded to offer flexibility. So these are preferred targets.
Yeah, just going to Council Stevenson's point about defensibility at appeal. Of course, you know, an inspector will look at this, will look at this in the round. And yes, there is a shortfall against the housing mix policy in the three, the three-bed provision. But when you look at it in the round, also the inspector would have regard to the fact that this is a hundred percent affordable housing scheme and that would be a big benefit. That benefit's added to the fact that it's social rented, which is, as I understand, the most affordable of the affordable categories of housing. So there are big pluses for it. Complies with other policies such as space standards, internal space standards, exceeds requirements in terms of H ten accessible housing. All of these units, well, just thirty percent are accessible units. Exceeds our requirements also in respect of EN policies. But that's partly a product of what they're proposing, also partly a product of revised building regulations. So when you look at it in the round and you do that sort of balancing exercise, yes, there is something which weighs heavily against it. But there are a number of factors which an inspector and planning officers and panel members will also have to have regard to in coming to a decision.
But any more questions? Paul?
Bearing in mind that this is social housing and this is obviously going to go on to our bidding system. And bear in mind, by the sounds of it, we're in a corner. We're also quite clear as a panel, we're not happy with the mix. I think let's be really clear, but you've painted a picture that we're stuck in a corner and that is what it is. Are we able to add some form of condition which basically says that the council has the ability to nominate people who are in oversized properties? Let's say someone's lost a partner, it's a three-bedroom property, it's one person, and actually have preference of nomination so that we can try and free up space within some of those underoccupied properties on our books to get them into these one-bed flats, which apparently this is a huge demand for. I would question that quite sincerely in the social rented market, to be absolutely honest. But to actually try and free up some of the system elsewhere. Because I think the problem we're all facing at the moment is, actually, there is a demand for three beds. We know there's lots of people stuck in three beds that we can't get into one bed. I know certainly from my ward, who borrows on to this, there's a massive demand for older people going into flats in the city centre because it's near amenities and services. So is there an actual, do we have some form of condition or option where we can actually have preference on moving people through to these properties via the bidding system on this development?
I don't think we can, no, council. I think it probably goes beyond our, beyond our powers. Because there are other mechanisms which are sent up to deal with allocation of housing. It's not something we can really deal with, I'm afraid.
Right, are there any comments? I think most of the questions were comments during your, especially from Council Paul Ray. But I absolutely understand where Council Paul Ray and Council Mithal and the rest of the colleagues are coming from. We do need three-bedroom houses in the city. But however, we are also shortage of one and two-bedroom houses and the flats in the city too. So, sorry, Council Stevenson.
I was just going to make the comment that we, I think we did this just this last time in terms of some mitigations. But for me, having heard the answers today, I think the balance in my mind would be if we are to refuse this today on the grounds that we do want more three-bed, et cetera, then the applicant's likely to appeal. And I suspect that the answer to that appeal will not go in our favour. And in some respects, it's not the applicant's fault that the council's policies aren't robust enough to deliver what we either as ward members want. And that's probably something we need to take up in further policy reviews. There is a thought that if we ask for three-bedroom or if we ask for to be taller, et cetera, and refused on that basis, that they might come back with something like that. But in the housing crisis we're looking at at present, I'm not sure I would wish to have my name attached to refusing the opportunity to deliver more social housing in an area where there is need. So in the rounded on that balance, Chair, I think we've heard what we need to hear. And unfortunately, we can't go any further with it, but I think there needs to be a review of policy on it.
Council Ray?
No, I don't really say this, but I agree with Council Stevenson. I think we are where we are. But I think there is a real question for development plans panel and for the chairs and the officers are about the robustness of some of these policies. To have something that we by definition has basically been said, has wriggle room in it. Sometimes there's too much wriggle room. And actually, we need to make sure that actually we're not giving so much wriggle room that developers decide that they don't want to do something just because it's easier not to and actually it's the appropriate thing to do.
I mean, in real life, I mean, we all want to see three-bedroom, four-bedroom houses in our part of the city. But unfortunately, where we are, where we are.
But unfortunately, where we are, where we are, but the last thing I would say that I represent a ward which has too many blocks and too many apartments in the city centre, London Hyde Park and surrounding areas. And I something don't appreciate 17 storeys high buildings because the residents that I represent, I mean hardly, I, I mean, most of the people who are living in a three bedroom flats in, in our, our part of the world, they want to see the young families moving into the houses where there are gardens and, and the kids can have an easy life. I mean, those blocks were, the, the blocks that we have in, in our ward, you know, newly wed couple moved into these two bedroom flats. And now they've got five or four childrens because of the shortage of properties in the city, they are stuck on 15 story high building. So something I, I mean, at the, at the beginning, when you were asking these questions, it was running through my mind, you know, not every family wished to be on the 15 story high building when they've got three or five, seven year old kids, you know. So on, 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 on the basis, does anybody wants to move? If there aren't any comments? Sure, Councilor Smith.
Sorry. My final comment is I think we're selling our residents short with this, but I agree that we've got our hands tied behind our back.
Councilor Ray, anyone to second? Councilor Bithel? All in favour? Anyone against? Any obstruction? Thank you very much for that. I, I, I think it's all clear, but if you do want to sum, sum up.
I'll just, just formally confirm then that members have resolved to defer a delegate's approval of the application to chief planning officer, subject to the prior completion of legal agreement and the conditions which are set out in pages 17 and 18 of the report.
Thank you. Right, item eight. We don't have any, anyone speaking against it, but we however, we've got someone speaking in favour of this application. But can I just remind members, just stick to the planning questions, please? So can I ask the, oh, sorry, sorry.
Thank you Chair. Yeah, so this is the planning application, outline planning application for the southern quadrant development that members went to visit on site this morning. It's an outline application for 925 dwellings, including means of primary access, central spine road and associated infrastructure works, which include a community hub facility, including primary school, convenience store, health provision on land within the, the southern quadrant. So just in terms of a bit of background, and I think some of you probably seen this slide before, it's an extract from the policies map in the development plan. And essentially, the, hopefully this works. Yes, so the orange area you see on the plan is the East Leeds Extension Housing Allocation. So the specific part that we're looking at is the, is the southern area. So the south of Leeds Road between there and Manston Lane and bounded by ELO to the east, which we obviously drove along this morning. So essentially, it fills in that area of land between ELO and the existing main urban area. To the east of ELO is land falling within the green belt. And then beyond that, the village of Scholes, separated from it by the strategic gap in that area of green belt there. On this plan, you can actually also helpfully see some other wider context. The area of pink to the south is the Thorpe Park Employment Allocation, which also now includes the Springs Retail Park. So just a bit of geography in terms of context. And then to the west, the blue area is the Cross Gates Local Centre. And to the north is Seacross Local Centre. So in terms of the various quadrants, and apologies, the slide slightly contorted. There are four quadrants forming the East Leeds Extension. And previously, I think it was back in June, I brought a position statement on the Red Hall, the Red Hall area, Red Hall site. Beyond that, between Wetherby Road and York Road is the Windmore Fields Development, which is the northern quadrant, which has an outline planning consent for 2,000 houses, a new primary school and a local centre in that part of the city. So the south is then Morick Green between York Road and Barrack Road. And that's an area of 875 houses, again recently achieved an outline planning consent. And then Penders Beck is the southern quadrant, which is the site we're looking at today between Leeds Road and Manston Lane. In terms of a bit of wider geography, I've started off with this aerial photograph to give a bit of context. Helpfully, it shows ELO on there to the east. And then the area of the site, as we saw on site this morning, it's essentially largely arable fields with some areas of trees, particularly around the edges, along the Cockback on the western side of the site, and through the middle of the site. And also along the area covered by a scheduled monument, which is, which relates to the former Barnbow Munitions Plant. I've gone into the area in a bit more detail, so hopefully it's a bit clearer, given the scale of the, the site. So at the northern end is Leeds Road going up to ELO, Smeaton Approach, coming down to John Smeaton Academy Secondary School. And then this area, the green area with the playing pitches, that forms part of the, the housing allocation and part of the application site, as does this area of Poundfield to the east. I mentioned on the site visit this morning, these are the, the John Smeaton playing pitches. They are land which is owned by the city council, subject to a current, well separately, a current planning application, as I've referred to in the report, to relocate two of those pitches to Windmore Grange. And the third pitch would be retained within a primary school on site in this location. But I'll come back to that point perhaps a bit later on. So moving further south, we've then got again the, the secondary school, but then also John Smeaton Leisure Centre, which has a variety of facilities there. There is a connection through, albeit what's essentially a plank of wood. So that's a, a connection that we seek to get improved off the back of the development. And then moving south, where they're moving to the residential areas to the west and the site boundary following the route of Cockback. You can see here Cockback runs through the middle of the site. And as we saw on site this morning, it's, it's essentially, essentially sits within a, a small wooded area either side. So this is the public right of way that we walked this morning. And that's the bridge over Cockback where we stopped to look at both the northern and southern parcels of development. So coming further south again, the public right of way that we walked is on this western side of the site, adjacent to the, the Penders Field Development to the west. And there's the Sandalese Way Industrial Estate to the west, which is where we, we stopped and crossed into the site. You'll note this area of the site I'm just pointing to here with the trees and vegetation, that's the route of the scheduled monument, which then basically curves around southwards towards Manston Lane. Other things to point out, there are some existing buildings in uses along Manston Lane largely unaffected, although there is the, the grade two listed dove coat in the southwest corner of the site. Can get the arrow to work. And then in the southeast, southeastern area, Lazenecroft Farm, which is the white rendered building is also grade two listed. And I've referred to them in the reports as, as key points. At Manston Lane, obviously it's been slightly rerouted to accommodate ELO to the south. But there is an access in which serves Lazenecroft Farm. So just on that point, this is a photograph that's taken from the ELO junction looking towards Lazenecroft Farm. And there's a retaining wall which holds back the field behind. The, the level of the field is actually lower than the top of the wall, but it's still slightly elevated. You'll note in the report, there was a, a comment made by conservation colleagues in relation to the impact of development on that listed building. It's worth just noting the application site boundary is actually slightly away from that wall, it's slightly further north. So the, the wall isn't the boundary. And the area of land, the strip of land just beyond the wall is actually within the ownership of Lazenecroft Farm. But the general point is around relationships, building heights and so on, which I'll perhaps come back, back to on the, on the master plan. So moving on, we talked a little bit on site this morning around local facilities in the local area. And I did mention that there is a plan. Now, I suspect you can't read the, the dots, so I have got a copy of it here in front of me. Essentially, immediately to the west of the site, that blue dot is the John Smeaton High School. And then the, the move dot to the south and the brown dot are the, and the gym and leisure centre at John Smeaton Leisure Centre. Further west, we then have a variety of dots. The blues are primary schools. So they include Manston St James, Primary School, Primary Academy, Manston Primary School and St Teresa's Catholic Primary School. And as you'd expect, there's a cluster of dots around Cross Gates Local Centre indicating various retail facilities, pubs, bars, pharmacies and so on. There are, in terms of specifically community facilities, and there is reference to the library, there's a church hall I know on the north side of Ozthorpe Road. And there's also the Barnbow, which I referred to on the site visit this morning. So in terms of other wider connections, I thought it'd be helpful just to include some slides to explain why or how the developers have arrived at the, the general illustrative master plan that they've, they've come to. This is a plan that was prepared for both the middle and southern quadrant applications, which shows existing rights of way and potential connections. And that's really to show how you can knit the, the new development into the existing, make those connections and provide access to existing facilities, including ELO. In terms of constraints on development, as with the middle quadrant, Cockback forms a western boundary, which then also runs through the centre of the site. And so there are flood risk zones associated with that, which are avoided by development. But clearly they are a constraint. I mentioned also the scheduled monument, sorry, the pink hatched area is essentially the application site. Obviously, ELO sits to the, to the east of that. And the dark green is the scheduled monument. So again, that follows that arc of, of land which has become treed over the passage of time and again is, is avoided by development. So tying some of those elements together, that results in the ability of making those footpath connections through proposing new footpaths connecting to ELO and the existing urban area. And also fundamentally, the inclusion of the spine road, which runs from the north from Leeds Road southwards all the way through the development down to Leeds Road. And that spine road will accommodate, or it'll be capable of taking buses. So it'll be designed as a, as a road which is, which is wide enough to accommodate buses and also has segregated cycleways and would be tree lined as well with, with verges. In addition to that, I've included this slide to then show how the development overlaps with existing green infrastructure and proposed green spaces. So the, the dark greens on here are the, are the naturalised areas. So as you'd expect, it incorporates those existing trees and naturalised areas to the Cockback Boundary through, to the west of the site and through the centre of the site, and also the area for the scheduled monuments. The moves are then the more formal green spaces. And you'll note that there's three equipped play areas and this follows the same principles as on the middle quadrant. So there's one in the north, the red spots essentially, one in the north, one in the centre and one in the south. I also mentioned the retention of a playing pitch as part of the primary school. And you can see that's there in that sort of movie pink colour to the north. So although the, the application is in outline, as I explained this morning, the developers have looked at what the capacity of the site is. And so they have worked up into quite a bit of detail around streets and developable spaces, having excluded all of those parts of the site which are not developable for various reasons. And not least because there are significant, section 106 asks on the development, particularly in terms of the contributions towards ELO and all of the other usual contributions in terms of and public transport and affordable housing and so on. So I thought it was helpful to just include a bit of that detail in terms of potential future development. So you can see from here, we see the spine road in the purple coming through the site. And then a number of then primary streets, which essentially lead to other more minor streets. And but essentially, there are a series of connected loops working through the site. And then in terms of density, as you'd expect, the areas along the spine road are likely to be the, the denser areas of development. So higher densities there, working down to medium densities to the east and west of the spine road, with areas of lowest density development on the, sorry, adjacent to Cockback. And then this slide then goes into building heights and indicates areas of two to four story development potential at key gateway locations. So in the north, adjacent to the local centre, around the bridge over Cockback, where the spine road would cross there and at that point in the, in the south. And then again, working down to two to three story development along the spine road and two story development elsewhere. So bringing all of those things together, results in the, the master plan. I should note, apologies, there, there's a slight deviation from the slides that we have in your packs. And there was a slightly older master plan, well, older as in from earlier in the week. So this is from the other day, which I've just included in the, in the presentation now. Essentially, it shows mostly the same things. And the key difference is it's hopefully slightly crisper and also indicates these rights of way in the red dashed lines and also shows ELO to the east, because that's an important component in terms of, well, now existing cycle and pedestrian infrastructure. So this hopefully shows how all of those elements tie in. If I then move on, I'll, I'll seek to just go sort of briefly through the master plan in a bit more detail to show, to explain what it shows and, and why. And starting at the northern end, now this, obviously this is turned around 90 degrees. So Leeds Road is on the western side of the screen. And I refer to the local centre, which is, is a key component of, of both middle and southern quadrants. And for, hello is part of a long discussion around where primary education and local centre uses should be located. So this area of land, this triangular area of land is actually owned by the city council, as I say. And so we have got in some ways a bit of a unique opportunity to really push and influence how this works. So colleagues in um asset management and regeneration have commissioned um basically feasibility work to look at this in a bit more detail, to work it up to ensure that it works and to ensure that we can get the best out of it that we can. So this has been worked up in a bit more detail. Again, I'd stress it's all outline. But it would be useful just to explain some of the parameters. So as a starting point, you'll see there's a there's a red hatched area which runs along Leeds Road and then turns towards Smeaton Approach. And that's part of a sewer easement, which understand is is quite deep and essentially not really movable. And so development has been suggested to basically deal with that by not building over it. So that's why the buildings are set back away from um from Leeds Road with car parking to the front. So at least it does provide passive surveillance from passing pedestrians and users over those public areas on the Leeds Road frontage. So behind those buildings, sorry, starting perhaps at the bottom is the two form entry primary school, the larger block. Uh and then the central block is suggested as retail. And then that sort of easternmost block is the healthcare and community use with a potential cafe and so on. Obviously, there could be a wide variety of uses, but certainly the feedback locally and from the consultative forum is that there's very much uh a drive particularly on the on the healthcare uses. Um and so that's something that we've been in discussions with um colleagues on. So for the primary school, there's a two form entry primary school on two hectares of land and that incorporates the building, playground areas, the playing pitch um and and other related um areas of space around it. You've then also got the retail within its um servicing area to the rear secured. And then the health and community areas also then have parking to the rear. It's also worth pointing out, there are sort of existing desire lines, although the the current pitches are fenced off and aren't usable without um consent from parts and countryside, I suppose. There are there are there will be desire lines across, so they have also also been factored in. So routes running along which will provide access into the leisure centre and also into the development. And I mentioned on site this morning that those those links through the residential development would mean that people could access, get access to the primary school without having to go all the way up the the Spine Road necessarily. So then moving on into the residential areas, um they've effectively been designed as perimeter blocks. So these sort of the the black lines on the of the orange areas really indicate plots overlooking streets. Essentially, so you can see a series of perimeter blocks working south along the Spine Road. And I mentioned before that the nature of the Spine Road is such that it's capable of taking a bus. It has verges on either side and it would have a segregated cycleway along its length. And again, these perimeter blocks overlook these areas of green space throughout the development, which also includes drainage swales and ponds and so on. Then moving south, this is the area we walked this morning, and I think there was comment made on the site visit around the existing properties. And I explained that generally the approach is to back properties onto gardeners. You have gardens backing onto gardens. You you create a secure block rather than having insecure rears. So this indicates basically those properties backing on to those existing residential units. And then coming southwards, again, the um the scheduled monuments I mentioned, obviously curves around down towards Manston Lane and all of that is retained within that area of green space. And again, you have a number of blocks uh backing on to development where appropriate. The grade two listed dovecote is in this area of the site. And obviously, as a reserve matters application comes forward, um that would then deal with that particular matter in in more detail. Um Lazenecroft Farm, coming back to the comments raised by the conservation officer, there's essentially the the master plan as is, shows um development backing on to development, which is which is fine, except as I mentioned earlier, there's a slightly slight change in levels. Um the applicants note that obviously ELO has been built more recently and that's a considerably higher level than Lazenecroft Farm. And that's acknowledged by conservation officers. But I think the general view is there ought to be some sort of buffer beyond the land that's in Lazenecroft Farm's ownership, just to create a bit of a separation and a bit of a a buffer between new development and and the and the building itself. So in terms of, as I say, obviously, the application is in outlines. So in terms of the details that would be approved in terms of means of access, this slide shows the approved access into the middle quadrant on the north side of Leeds Road. On the south side, there's the main pro Spine Road access into um into the southern quadrant. And then on the south side of Leeds Road is then the access into the local centre um and other pedestrian routes. And I mentioned before, the sewer easement along um the frontage and down Smeaton Approach. And that's partly the reason for moving, uh well, partly the reason for designing the scheme as it is, and also other highway reasons for moving the uh the highway access for the local centre from Smeaton Approach to Leeds Road. And and that's been worked up in some detail and is understood to be acceptable in highway terms. Um a- as I've set out in the report, in terms of those junctions, um as you can see from the from the slide, the various uh lanes that are proposed, but particularly also the toucan crossing, which provides access across for cycles and pedestrians between each of the sides of the road. And there are segregated cycleways on either side of uh Leeds Road at that point as well. Um similarly, on the southern end of the site, again, there's a main Spine Road access in. Um there's again, there's toucan crossing provided as well as an informal crossing point. And then because of the scheduled monument, that that eastern parcel of development behind Lazenecroft Farm also requires its own access and that is provided from uh from Manston Lane and a further informal crossing point before you get to the traffic lights on the approach to ELO. Uh I've just included this slide to give an indication of phasing, as with the other quadrants, it's anticipated that development will commence from either end from where the um Spine Road connection starts. So the areas in yellow are the, according to the slides, there's zero to three years in the yellow areas, then four to seven years in the green areas and then in the 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 pink colour. I think that's eight to eleven years um in that central area. So that gives an indication of the overall build out time for the development. And then these are just some um some images that were included in the designer access statement. Essentially demonstrating houses overlooking green spaces and streets and so on, applying the principles that we'd normally seek to apply. And then brings us back to the master plan again. In terms of points that I just wanted to make, I think I mentioned on the site visit this morning, um that we're hoping to have an officer from Children's Services present to answer any questions on education. Unfortunately, they they're working on a piece of work that's become very urgent and couldn't make this afternoon, but they did provide me with a very quick bullet point summary. Um clearly, I've gone in some detail in the report to you provide the general narrative, which is essentially a a primary school is required on site. Um so I'll I'll go through the bullet points. So effectively, two two uh land is secured for a two form entry uh primary school and that would be four hundred and twenty places or sixty per year group. The expected primary yield from both the middle and southern quadrants, which is roughly one thousand eight hundred units. Uh when once you apply the formula that children's services use to calculate um these things, that gives you four hundred and fifty primary age pupils um or sixty four per year group. Uh identified need for new provision to open in a phased way as demand gradually builds, i.e. one form of, sorry, one and that should be one form en- entry across multiple year groups initially from as early as September twenty twenty five. And I know that again, as part of this work to try and get on top of what happens on the local centre site, I know that colleagues are pushing the from the education side as well to make that happen. Um new provision is likely to be a free school delivered either by the Department for Education or by the City Council. Uh depending on the delivery route, either the DFE would fund the bills fund the bill scheme if they deliver the scheme or the council would fund the scheme using basic need grant funding and the section one oh six contributions. Um city development would need to confirm all of this closer to the time, subject to exec board approvals. Um existing schools in the local area are forecast to have some surplus capacity available to meet short term demand from the East Leeds Extension in totality and ahead of the new school opening. For secondary provision in this area, um there's forecast to be sufficient surplus capacity available to meet or demand from the East Leeds Extension. In addition, options may exist to propose expansion of secondary schools if and when required. And that could be paid, that could be paid for from the SIL generated by the East Leeds Extension developments. Um in in wider general terms, I think, as I mentioned on site this morning, the Trinity Academy further into the centre of Leeds has obviously changed the the dynamics of the the various polygons for secondary schools. And so that's freed up. So that's the part of the reason for freeing up capacity elsewhere in the east of the city. And so that's in part why there's sufficient capacity uh there. So I think that really concludes the presentation. As I say, at the this is really a position statement at this stage. So it's then open for uh members' comments on the the matters raised in the report. And then we'll take those away back to the applicant and resolve the outstanding matters with a view to coming back to panel in the near future. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Uh we don't have any objectives for this item, but however, we've got a number of uh supporters uh for this application. So can I invite you to come on the top table, please?
Uh you've got four minutes and when you whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chair. Uh my name's Mark Johnson. I've got eight very brief points to make over the four minutes. And then, of course, we're here to answer any other questions that members may have. Uh the first one is my introductions. As I say, Mark Johnson, Johnson Mauer Planning Consultant. On my right, Adam Riding from Taylor Wimpey. And on my left, Mike Ashworth from Redrow. And these are the two developers for this southern quadrant proposal. Um Andrew Crates has detailed the proposal and its relationship with the middle quadrant, northern quadrant and and perhaps even Red Hall, that form part of the East Leeds Extension. And we fully support the commentary that's just been given on it. What is noticeable today even is that even in this four thousand two hundred dwelling proposal and the nine hundred and twenty five dwellings that are on the table today is that there are no objectives speaking. And in particular, with respect to the southern quadrant, there are only fifteen letters of objection. And even on the two thousand leaflet drop we did more recently, we only got four comments. So I think the message that we're getting in effect from the development side and is and and would certainly one that the council are giving us is to get on with it. Um we know that ELO is open and now we need to get on and repay the monies that have been invested by the council in ELO. We know that you've got eight questions. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask one more question at the end of this. Um but before I do that, I'll just briefly upon another a number of other points. First of all, the section one oh six, it's described in the the report in a very detailed way, but there's one or two elements that are slightly missing and it's in effect the unknown. But just to fill in those gaps as far as we see them, education contribution towards primary, we think it's going to be in the order of about two point four million pounds from this nine hundred and twenty five. The bus service references not having a figure, but we think that'll be around about seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds because that was the same for the middle quadrant. And the SIL contribution again will be something in the order of about two and a half million. So what we've got overall, excuse me, is a package on the southern quadrant of something in the order of a twenty seven million pound section one oh six contribution, which is roughly about twenty eight thousand pound of dwelling plus the fifteen percent affordable housing. And I know I said this about the middle quadrant, but that's perhaps the biggest section one oh six package you'll have seen in any residential development in Leeds. Climate change, we know is a question on the agenda to members. Um we are happy to answer questions on climate change, but what I would say briefly is that your current policy, which is based upon the twenty thirteen building regulations, is to better those regulations by twenty percent. That's now been overtaken by government partel twenty twenty one. That's now thirty one percent betterment. So the 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 current building regulations is better than your own policy. Where we're taking this development currently is we're moving towards the twenty twenty five future home standard. We can talk about that in a little bit of detail, but quite frankly, it's a matter for reserve matters. But what I would say is that from the statement that we can make is that we're not introducing gas into this development either. So we're moving more towards the twenty twenty five standard and and significantly above and beyond your current policies and even government policy. Heritage is a point that we would like to come back to, but with respect to the dovecote, which is inside the application, then Redrow have commissioned a building survey with respect to that building. And if it can be saved from its current condition, it will be saved and put back into public use. That's certainly the intention and it's very very similar to what Redrow are doing at the very top of the East Leeds Extension on Red Hall, the another dovecote on that one. Again, we're trying to get these older buildings back into use. Lazenecroft Farm, which isn't inside the site, we accept it needs respect. We're not necessarily having an agreement that it needs a wider buffer, but we do need to come up with a design solution on that boundary that works for the listed building. And we think we can do that in the reserve matters. But we're very mindful that the setting of the listed building is now significantly different, bearing in mind the ELO road that now towers above it on at least two sides. Design and green space, happy to come back to that. I think Andrew Crates has described it perfectly.
Chair, if I may, my final question, which is a very brief one, is the section one oh six for this site is almost identical to what the middle quadrant will be. And the section one oh six is what is essentially determines the outline. The majority of all the other matters are reserve matters. And I just wonder whether or not with the greatest of respect is that members here will want to see the reserve matters application coming forward to comment upon these points, which we can't necessarily better on by coming back to this committee in the outline. And therefore, my question is, do we need to bring this one back as an outline to this committee? Or can we delegate and then move to the reserve matters so we can actually demonstrate the comments that I've just made in more detail? Thank you, Chair.
Does anyone want to come back to that last question?
David?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I suppose it's really one for members, once members have gone through the through the comments section um can come back to at the end of that and reach your views as to whether that's something they want to follow or 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 whether they want the application to come, the outline application to come back to uh come back to the plans panel.
Uh thank you for that, David. Any questions for for the speakers? Counselor Anderson?
Just one quick one. The council are currently out of consultation on the course core strategy amendments. And you've been very clear in terms of how you're working towards twenty twenty five. How close will you be to our new standards that we hope to adopt? Are you moving towards them? Are you not interested moving towards them because they're not uh being put on the uh statute book yet? Where are you on a scale, let's say, one to a hundred in terms of compliance with the new standards that we are hoping to adopt?
Thank you, Counselor Anderson. I'm not actually sure you're out to consultation yet, but we're very mindful of that. You're in the preparation of documents towards it and we do know what those documents contain in effect. I think the point being is that we're moving towards what I would call the future home standards and your your own consultation references that now. The the difficulty for the industry and yourselves and us is that we actually don't see the standard yet confirmed. So whilst we all think we know what we're talking about, the government actually hasn't nailed its colours to the mast. So what what we're doing through this development is recognizing the fact that the majority of this development will be built twenty twenty five and beyond, because we're in twenty twenty two now. And by the time we get to a detailed approval, it'll be twenty twenty three. By the time the 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 land is bought and agreed and approved and all the conditions are sorted, will be twenty twenty four. So hence the comment, we're not starting with gas because the twenty twenty five standards don't do that. The other elements of the twenty twenty five standards are a drive towards zero carbon. And what we're saying is that if we can start with the twenty twenty five standards in mind is that we'll be delivering development here, which is called zero carbon ready, which is in effect what future home standards are. Beyond that, right now, what we can't do is that we can't provide you with the detail, but we can provide you with a detail in the reserve matters application. But we can provide you with the detail in the reserve matters application. Hence my comment is that I can't improve on the comment, but but what I can say is that we are significantly moving towards. An alignment with the council's thinking as well.
So all I can do is ask.
Yeah. Any other questions? Right, thank you. Sorry, Counselor Bithil.
Thank you, yeah. Um, so from what I can gather, today we're just looking at the connections specifically. Um. I, having been on site this morning, have some concerns around the like footpath based connections. And where they lead to. Um. And I just wondered what you were planning in terms of making sure that we don't design on the development. Routes for people to be going down that then lead to unlit um. Places where women and I guess the wider population as well are more likely to find themselves unsafe. Because it's clear that you guys are going to design beautifully, but you back on to another estate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I I I think it does, and you're absolutely right to point it out and and to some extent, and not kicking the can down the road into the reserve matters, but. There's a secure by design in effect element to the detail of the reserve matters. And on all of those routes that we're proposing, and bearing in mind. There are three corridors. There's there's the one along Cock Beck, which is the the slightly more nature corridor. There's the central spine road, which is the one which is the well lit. Walking cycling corridor that will go north, south, and it'll make the connection to the school, the shop and all of that in effect. And then you've got the E law corridor with its running and cycling and walking as well with some major walkways along that. The only issue then with respect to safety design is the one along the cockback, because that's the one that you need to make sure that you've got. Some cross connectivity with, but they need to be lit and safe to cure. So what we're probably expecting there is lower level lighting. But ultimately, if you're in this development and you're walking your children to the school, you're probably walking up the spine road. And cycling up the spine road rather than going across the court back. But there are connections and we we will be picking those up in the detail.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Just a very quick one. On the spine road, is it going to be sizable enough that there will be parking on the street as well? I spend a lot of time having people asked to have the verges removed. So to put verges in. Um, could lead to future parking problems if the road isn't wide enough.
I think in terms of my understanding of the design where we're currently at behind the scenes, and and to be fair, we're slightly more advanced in the middle quadrant design. But it's the same principle is that we're not looking to have parking at all along the spine road. So the spine road is in effect, it's a it's a low level transporter route at twenty miles an hour for cars and buses. With walking and cycling, but then all the provision for parking is inside and on the plots. And as where as much as possible to take cars out of the street scene with respect to the the spine road. So it's not, it's not something that you'd be going around cars on. We can't say that people won't park on it, but there shouldn't really be a need to park on the spine road.
So will there be a T R O to that effect or not?
That might be a question that you would want to ask of the highways officer, but. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not assuming one is being requested or asked for. It's that the design detail will demonstrate that we don't need necessarily to see cars on that road. There'll be cars using the road, but there'll be parking off the road. And there's certainly a wide verge, a three metre wide verge, grass strip that runs alongside the walking and cycling link as well, which is, I think, four and a half metres wide.
Yeah, Andrew, I I I think Andrew might be able to help on that question.
So it might be useful to add in a bit around sort of general design principles in terms of what we look for, in terms of. Housing layouts and the and the relationship between houses and driveways and the roads that they front onto. So we often talk about having. Trying to get parking to the side of houses rather than the front. And certainly along the spine road, you wouldn't want frontage parking. We would want to very much minimise that. So I'd envisage parking being accessed via a made driveway. Up to the sides of dwellings and then having areas of verge in front of properties. So you would hopefully then have a reasonably. Secure verge for the future, as opposed to the problem that I think you're referring to is where often people, they move into a property where there's actually quite dense. Parking arrangements, why those houses were built without any parking at all. And then you get lots of verge, which is then lost to development or or just muddy areas. So I think hopefully we can probably design that out to the detailed design along the spine road so that it's not an issue and doesn't require. TROs. And additionally, we'll be looking to plant in those verges as well with trees. So an added reason for not not losing them in the future. So I don't know if that that helps at all.
Yeah, I guess it does. I, so from what you're saying, I'm just clarifying my understanding. That would mean that all the properties on that spine road would have at least a double sized driveway. Because obviously people have multiple cars now. And I guess extra off-road parking for visitors?
There would certainly be for for standard houses, you'd expect two spaces per dwelling. So you'd have two off-street car parking spaces. Um, we wouldn't want to be seeking to overprovide for car parking and encourage people to have more cars than than can be accommodated. And but more generally, there would be visitor spot visitor parking around the development. And but they're they're really sort of matters of detail to be worked up. So that helps.
If I can just remind members, questions to the objectors, please. Counselor Stevenson? You, any, any other questions? Yes, David.
Um, on paragraph forty two, I just wondered if you had any discussions or will have discussions with the West Yorkshire Combined Authority. About the possible use of the flexi bus, um, which has been on trial in East Leeds. And I think will be a a very good in terms of like electric buses and climate change. And twenty mile an hour limits in the area. So if some of the money can be. Perhaps put in that that way, because the, I think the funding from West Yorkshire ends early next year. So that it might come in handy to keep the flexi bus going.
Uh. Thank you, Counselor Clever. That's one for the council, but what I would say with respect to paragraph forty two, it doesn't give you the indication of the. Seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds that goes into providing the bus service throughout the life of the site. In effect, it's the kickstarting of the bus service. But that bus service is running all the way down through each of the quadrants. So how. The council and 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 why I could choose to use it, whether it's flexi bus, electric buses in effect, is is one for the council and the the authorities. The developers in effect are writing the cheque on a regular basis and we'll we'll hopefully see that that. That is quite an important spine road and an important service. And I would expect it to be an electric bus in in whatever means it is.
Uh. Thank you. I can't see anyone else showing any interest, but in that case, thank you very much for your time. Uh. Now, any questions to the officers? To Bithil?
Thank you. Um, can we, for when it comes back, um, get an image of the polygons as is expected. Around the school places and an estimation of the student numbers per um catchment area, please?
Yeah, we can certainly liaise with education colleagues to try and answer that. Counselor Smith?
Thanks, Chair. Um, we currently have um an issue. On another plans panel where a school is seeking to. Build a G three G pitch, because they don't have sufficient soft play provision. On their or within their own grounds. Uh, I note that we're taking away a large chunk of soft play provision. From John Smeaton High School as part of this development. And I wondered if that left them with sufficient soft play provision for their pupil numbers, please?
Thank you, Counselor. Um, yeah, just to clarify, there there's no loss of provision from John's meeting academy. They're completely separate outside of the site. So the area of land that's owned by the city council are playing pitches where, for example, somebody could book. You know, Sunday football or something like that. So they're for that purpose, not for school's purpose. But there is a a pitch that's retained on site for the for the new primary school. Yeah. So there wouldn't be any loss elsewhere. Um, it's probably also worth noting for that primary school that they have got other spaces, a playground space, key stage one space. A nature area and so on, as well as the pitch. So hopefully avoid that situation of shortfalls of particular land uses in the future.
Counselor Stevenson?
Um, thanks, Chair. Can we have a bit more information around Laizden Croft Farm? I know it's sort of outside the. Plan area, but what's what's the ownership situation there? I seem to recall it is owned by the council, I think. Was it compulsory to purchase? So what's the plan afterwards?
Thank you. Yeah, so the the building was historically owned by the city council. And it has been sold to um a business who are have a current planning application to operate a children's nursery. From that property. So that's an undetermined application at the moment. Um, there's various issues to resolve, as I understand. Um, but as I say, their their ownership goes just to the north of that wall that referenced in the photograph. And I think they're looking at um having that as a sort of an allotment zone area along that strip of land. So the point that I was making is there ought to be, or the point that the conservation officer is making is that there ought to be some sort of. Buffer or an appropriate boundary treatment beyond that area, i.e. the responsibility shouldn't be on the. On Laizden Croft Farm, it should be on the developer to provide that buffer to create a bit of separation between the two, notwithstanding the point that Mark makes around. If the new relationship and the new setting in the context of E law.
I guess then when the, when this comes comes back, I think if it. If that application proceeds through, then clearly we may wish to look at connectivity between that nursery provision. And the estate, because if it's if it's a boundary, otherwise they're going to have to go right round, aren't they, rather than be able to walk through?
I can just come back to that. Yeah. Also, on the master plan, there are, that Laizden Croft Farm sits below that area of development on the. The southeastern corner, which is separate from the rest of the development anyway, by virtue of the green space along the scheduled monument. But there are footpath connections across that green space. So from the larger area of development in a southeast direction. So you would be able to walk through the development and down to um essentially round the corner from Laizden Croft Farm and then access the property that way. And that's probably, without speaking on their behalf, I suspect that's probably preferable than people coming back way over their garden wall, as it were.
Right, if if there aren't any, oh, sorry, Counselor Flint?
Uh, I think I mentioned these things this morning, but um, yeah, just um, councillor Bithil mentioned school spaces. I think just more evidence about high school spaces. Because from my understanding, a lot of the schools are at capacity and potentially like year on year, there's going to be. You know, a significant number of high school children living in this development. And then just. Um, if some thought could go into like community space, so I know that there's um space for a retail unit. Uh, is it a health centre? I presume that's a GP surgery and the school. But um, you know, there's like. Going to be hundreds and hundreds of people living here. Like, where is the space the community could hire for. Uh, meetings, maybe, you know, guides, cubs groups, don't know, like knitting groups, residence associations, just um. And it's all at kind of one end, like just is there, where can the uh people gather like in community?
And just, yeah, just come back to that. So on the, so the the location of the of the local centre. It's essentially been cited there because it's equidistant for both the middle and southern quadrants. And that's because the primary score is is required as a result of. Both of those developments and the same applies to the local centre. So that's why it's located where it is in part. The other reason is. Geographically, having a a frontage to Leeds Road, that means that there's more footfall and it's easier to access without having to travel through. Deeper into a residential area. Um, the scheme is in in outline. Uh, but we have been very careful to ensure that there is some sort of community use provision in there. As I said, we're, as a council, we're trying. Essentially trying to facilitate this happening. We can't make, we can't be the deliverer, but we can be the facilitator. So, um. As I mentioned earlier, we we have, there's a health subgroup which I sat along with other colleagues. And that's to try and understand what the health ask is. And there are people from the cultural sector sits on that group as well. And they've made the point that there's a general issue around wellbeing, which goes beyond, you know, seeing a doctor or a nurse or whatever. More around those sorts of activities that you mentioned. And so we are keen to try and get some space in there that provides that service. Um, it's considered that's the best location geographically, but it would take the point and we can perhaps explore that a bit further. Uh, it might be something that's worth us taking up with, or taking up through the consultative forum. Um, because there we have got a good cross section of local residents and ward members from all of those. Um. Yeah, adjacent wards and so on. So happy to take that away.
Counselor Sharp?
Councillor Flint pinged my question about healthcare.
We were all together, weren't we, this morning? So anyone else, any questions? Right, shall we move on to the comments then, please? Any comments? To Bithil?
Thank you. Um, and I did have to nip out, so it may already have been covered. Um, but I just wanted to put on record how important I think it is that we include a dentistry. Um, specifically or an NHS dentist, um specifically in the. Um, conditions of the requirements over and above just general healthcare, um because we know that trying to get. NHS dentists and adding all those extra people is a particularly difficult um activity. Thank you.
Point taken on board. Uh, any, any other quen- Counselor Stevenson?
On the parking point we discussed earlier, I think, um. Some serious thought needs to be given to this. We've raised it beforehand, but there seems to be a a movement. Well, first of all, I was triggered by your um suggestion that we need to reduce the number of cars. Uh, there, because in reality, uh, people will use cars and all you're doing is creating the casework that we then have to deal with afterwards. Uh, because there's not enough uh parking spaces on the house, because they are using the verges. And in the, in this day and age, when you've got five bedroom executive homes and you're supplying two cars. Is uh ridiculous, because you're going to have two point four children or the rest of it that then get to eighteen and all have cars. Um, and that creates massive issues for the council afterwards to try and deal with. And on a design point, um, when you create the um driveways at the side of the house. Which are wide enough for one car and you you expect both cars to line up, you actually, you're going to end up with three or four. And people don't use their drives, because when Nancy Fanny wants to nip to the shop, she has to ask Uncle Bob and the four children to move first. Uh, to get out. So actually having car parking spaces side by side is uh is preferable. And you can't do anything about it, but it is a comment, so I'll make it anywhere. Um, that. Just over the ward boundary on this site is 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 the Haywood Ward. And if this application was coming in there, we'd be looking at thirty five percent affordable housing. And um. The policy is what it is, but it needs to be reviewed, because it's just not acceptable that fifteen percent affordable housing. Is the figure we're looking at in a, an area nearer the inner city, uh, the inner east. When if you were out in our neck of the woods, you'd be asking for thirty five and actually the um, the demand is more in the inner east area as well. Thank you, Chair.
Right, any other comments? Andrew, do you want to come back to anyone? Anyone? Sure, Counselor Smith?
Sorry, I'm a bit like Columbo today, aren't I? Just one more thing. Um, could we make sure that there is condition?
Excuse me, Counselor uh Smith, Counsel, Counsel Ray, please. Can we have one meeting, please? Uh, Counselor Smith?
Sorry, sorry, Chair. Um, is it possible to put a condition on? I know the the applicant has has assured us that they will build to. Um, at least um twenty twenty five building standards. But could we condition it, please, just in case they start to build earlier and then they um they do build to the current standards? Uh, my thought process is it's cheaper and easier for the homeowner then. Um, rather than having to retrofit at a later date?
Um, I think the way that we'd approach it is as with the the other quadrants, we can, we'd probably condition. Um, sort of updated sustainability appraisals for um for each parcel that comes forward. So we can have a look at the detail of what's what comes in. But it would be what's appropriate at that point in time. There wouldn't need, there wouldn't be a need to impose a condition. To comply with future standards, because the part L is coming to the building regulations route. So it's covered by other legislation. So effectively. The the other legislation is overtaking our planning requirement. So there wouldn't be a need to condition it, is all I'm saying. Okay.
Right, if I can draw members' attention, the the panel is requested to. Right, if I can draw members' attention, the the panel is requested to provide information in relation to the following question set out on the page seventy three, paragraph one five nine of the agenda papers. So do you want to go by each question or shall we just go from one to nine? Right, any comments on question one? Anyone else?
Compliance, you know, voluntarily complying rather than waiting until they've been formally approved. It would then save the need for houses to be retrofitted in years to come.
Anyone else on that question? Question two? Three?
Sorry, Chair, on two, can we?
I think question two we missed uh on and you talked, sorry, I'm all over at the moment. Question two then, shall we move on to question two?
Can we pick up the parking point in in two?
Two and number three, councillor Bethel?
I take it any comments we've already made in the meeting, we don't need to now repeat under these, you guys all slot them in, right?
Four? Councillor Flint?
I know this probably comes under the more detailed um thing, but could we look at some sort of community orchard space as part of the biodiversity?
Is a good point. Uh councillor Smith?
I was gonna say that, oh, some sort of allotment, sort of grow your own sort of space. I think I raised it previously on the the other quadrant. I just think it would be a nice communal way to mix people together.
And on that point, the SEAC are looking at the food strategy that the council have been developed by councillor Marsha Katung, I think, has been working on that. So we need to make sure that these things are gelling in. Um it's not been formally adopted by the council yet, but hopefully it will be done so soon. And it'd be good if we start linking into some of these policies.
Right, five, we've already talked about the parking. Uh anything else on five? No, six? Seven? You were, yeah, most of it has been covered, but I'm just going through. Eight? And nine, any additional? Right.
Yeah, the the any other additional question uh was from the agent in relation to on the basis that there's a small number of technical matters, there'll be nothing that would materially change between now and when this comes back to panel, would members be um minded to um delegate? Oh, sorry, yes, to delegate approval to officers?
So presumably what we're saying is we would be authorising just to bring forward the full application, that's what we'd be saying. Rather than in in two separate stages, we just say bring everything together. That's what we would be.
What what you'd be authorising would be for officers to go away to complete the work on this application to issue an outline planning consent. And then after that, when reserve matters applications come in, which give you that final level of detail, those reserve matters applications would be brought back to panel.
My only concern with that is bitter experiences taught me that sometimes officers don't put the correct conditions on the outline and we are then told when it comes to uh reserve matters, sorry, that's already been dealt with. Uh we can't do anything more about it. Uh I'm not saying you're one of these officers because I have no evidence that you have, but other officers have uh gone ahead, given outline permission, we've then come back again and said, what about this? We're told, nope. That's been already agreed, we can't do anything about it. That's my only concern about that process. Um but I'll leave it up to others to decide whether or not they agree. Officers aren't always doing everything they should do.
Councillor Stevenson?
In the list of uh comments that you've captured that we've made today, is there anything in that that would be covered at outline that isn't fo- part of reserve matters? And if the answer is yes, then I would suggest it probably ought to come back to us.
I think that essentially there are matters of detail to be pursued through when when you have a detailed reserve matters layout and you can actually pinpoint how the parking works, how the how houses work, where the connections are made. Um the only bit that would be secured through the outline are the the connections outside of the site. And that's picking up the point that councillor Bethel was making earlier, and a bit like on the middle quadrant where we secured lit routes to provide connections to bus routes, as we did on the middle quadrant, we would seek to do that off the section one O six agreement attached to this application.
Right, if there aren't any other, sorry.
Um.
Councillor Smith?
I so I've made really clear how important I feel that people's safety in that design into the connections is. So if that's the only thing that you guys are then going to be making a decision on, I I feel like I've already said my piece and therefore it's given the steer already.
Three?
Just because obviously this is quite sufficiently uh advanced, is there a bit of a middle ground where actually you get sight of it as chair and if you feel there's anything that needs to come back to us, that we delegate that decision to you as chair. And actually, if you look at the offices give you and you go, actually, I think there's a question to be answered here, then it comes back. But if you're then happy, actually, the questions, the conditions are solid enough, then it progresses as being suggested. Is there a middle ground?
I think we need to check with the legal uh.
There there is potentially a middle ground, yes, you could you could defer um defer and delegate it in consultation with the with with the chair. Um so yes, that that is an option. That obviously puts quite a lot of onus and responsibility on the chair, particularly bearing in mind councillor Anderson's point about the 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 list of conditions and whether those conditions cover all the points that the plans panel want them to. And I'm very conscious of the fact that you actually haven't seen any conditions as as yet. Now, from an officer perspective, it's actually relatively straightforward in the sense that this is, you know, it's an allocated site. All they're seeking to do is establish the principle on top of that allocation and agree the 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 means of the means of access. So in broad terms, it's actually quite a simple application because it's policy compliant. But there is a certain amount of devil in the detail in terms of the conditions. So it 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 may be that there's an alternative middle ground that we just bring back a short term report and say, look, we've progressed it this far and these are the conditions, are you happy with with that list of conditions? And then I think we'll, as officers, will have some comfort and also as members will have some some comfort. Um but ultimately, the determination would be with with officers to to delegate it. And we wouldn't necessarily bring back a full blooded big report on it. But it'd be one that would concentrate on those conditions just to make sure that members are content with that.
Councillor Stevenson?
Can I plagiarise everything that David just said and that?
And put that ademotion in my name? Anyone in favour? Against? No, that's carried, thank you.
Shall I just confirm? Okay, thank you very much, the members. We have we have got notes in in respect of each of the questions. I won't go through those now because they'll be summarised in the minutes when they come forward. But just to be clear, what we will do at a future date is bring back a report which will specifically deal with the list of conditions um that we're looking to attach to any planning permission, uh outline planning permission that is issued. So you'll get you'll get sight of that. Thank you, Chair.
Are you guys, is everyone okay for a five minutes break or shall we shall we carry on? Five minutes comfort break, yeah?
Right, thank you very much, Chair. This this is a an application that's been, of course, been before this plans panel, before it came uh back in back in July. So this is the updated report picking up on the comments which members raised at that point in time. So what I'll do is, as I go through the slides, I'll just go through the slides, because the scheme hasn't actually changed, it's still the same scheme uh members have got to make a decision on. So what I'll do is I'll just remind members of the scheme by going through the slides. But I'll try and pick up on some of the points which uh members raised last time and the response that we had in uh in in doing so. Um before I get on to to that, I should say that we have received uh four further letters of representation, which I'll I'll briefly run through. Um and these have been to, members may have received uh letters directly to. But the four that we've seen is is essentially say that the public cons, the additional public consultation has been inadequate. Um that you'll see in the report, there's a reference to a meeting that's taken place between the residents of number twenty nine and the applicant. The residents number twenty nine say to call that a meeting is inaccurate. Uh they point that scheme has not changed. They say that they dispute what they've been told in discussions with the applicants about the height of their house. Uh because there was a discussion about the relative heights of properties. Um and they also dispute what they've been told by the applicant about the amount of material that's going to be moved from uh to create the the access drive. And the importance for number twenty nine at that point is that they're one of the properties which borders on to the the proposed access road. Um so there's uh attention is drawn to the And so there's attention is drawn to the comments from the nature conservation officer and I'll deal with those. As we go through the presentation and ultimately the residents asked that or one residents has asked the application be deferred for further consultation with local. With local residents. There is also a more general point that's been raised by two or three local residents with us. Which is that there is no public speaking this time round and I thought I ought to explain that where why that is the case. Obviously, we have protocols for these sort of situations and what the protocol for public speaking at plans panel says. Is says for the avoidance of doubt, and this is talking about applications which are there for determination. Rather than a position we just had where we had a position where we've had position statements and then for determination. This is about when we've reported an application for determination. And it says for the avoidance of doubt, applicant supporters or objectors to the application will only be entitled to address the panel. On one occasion, unless in the opinion of the chair, significant new information has been produced. Raising new material planning considerations. It goes on to say in those circumstances, speakers should only speak about the new matters. Or the amended details, not about matters which have been previously considered by the panel. Now, in in this particular instance, the scheme is as it was back in July. We have got some further information, but in terms of that raising new material planning considerations, it doesn't. The material planning considerations are exactly the same now as they were in July. But you've got a little bit more information on some of those considerations that's that's coming before you. So in those circumstances, the very strong advice that we we've given to the chair and this is based on what we've done previously. And to be consistent with what we've done previously is as there's ultimately, there's no new material planning considerations that have been raised. As a result of the deferral or reporting it back, then there's no public speaking. So that that's that's the the position with this this application. So as I say, it did come to plans panel back in July. And hopefully this will move it on. Right, nope. It's got a bit over excited, okay. So as members can see from that slide there, the the site. Is the the car parking area. So it's that car parking area plus this embankment, which you can see is reasonably well trade. Plus. Yeah, it didn't miss it, sorry, but there's you see this green strip which run between two residential properties out onto Oakwell Mount. And that's where the the access through to the development is. And the site, it's located within the district centre of of Roundhay. It's not within the conservation area, but the far extent where you see the words Oakwood's surgery is the closest it comes to the the conservation area. This is a scheme, members recall it, four pairs of semi-detached houses delivering eight three-bedroom properties. You can see that the see where the the access road goes through at the bottom there, there are three trees. Which are covered by a tree preservation order, two of those trees are to to come out. Then in terms of the houses themselves, you'll see each has two surface car parking spaces. One tandem or a couple of them are tandem, what we'd call tandem spaces, two side by side. A few with two spaces, sorry, side by side and some properties also have garages. And you can see the gardens there extending up into the the tree area up the tree embankment to the back. This is a few photos now just to remind members of the the site. So you can see it's former former car park space, you can see the street lighting there for the car parking lighting. You can see how the embankment goes with the mature trees generally around the perimeter of the site. And the in the foreground on the embankment is essentially some some scrub land. This is looking across the site towards the back of the home bargains. Site and you can see the palisade fencing there which denotes the the two. And again, this is looking from the top end of the site across to where the access would be. Further view of the car parking, again, you get an idea of the nature of the embankment. That goes there. And this is a photo from Oakwell Mount showing the location of the proposed access. And as you look at that slide, to the left is number. Twenty nine, which is on slightly higher ground, and then you've got on the right is number thirty one. Which is on the slightly lower ground and you may recall that the residents number twenty nine. Are against the the developments now, concerns are outlined in the report, but. Essentially, they've got concerns about the stability of the house, the impact of creating the access drive. And toing and froing along that access drive and the impact that will have on their amenities. And you recall that the residence number thirty one actually spoke in favour of the development, preferring a residential development. To the disused car park. So one of the points that members raised at last plans panel was for asked officers to go back. Talk to the developer to look at an alternative access point into the site. And that access point that you're asked us to look at was off Gledhau Rise. So this is the the main ax that access point which goes into and serves the home bargains car park. So you can see the home bargain store on the left-hand side and the GP surgery. On the right-hand side and then you can see some of the car parking there for the the home bargain store. The other point to note when looking at the home bargain store is that you can see that there is at the entrance to the store. There is a quite a significant change in levels from the road level. Members who know the site probably recall that you have to go down some steps to get into to the entrance. The other point to note on this is that the extent to the adopted road, the adopted highway. Goes up to just on that curve past the. And doctor's surgery. Now, there were two things that that happened here. First off, the developer. Or the applicant spoke to the owners of the store. Who are leasing it out to home bargains and approached them as to whether they would be agreeable. For them to acquire the land so that they could use it as an access. So the process would be in effect, they acquire the land. Be made up to adoptable standards and then the council would adopt adopt the road. The freeholder said they wouldn't be comfortable with that position, they wouldn't sell the land to the to the applicant. On the basis that they had an existing agreement with home bargain store, they didn't want to jeopardise that. They didn't want to lose control over the land in essence. Also, to achieve a a road to an adoptable standard. Would involve wiping out a number of car parking spaces to get the appropriate width of road server development and the store. You're looking, I think it was something like nine point two metres wide. And four metres, two metres footway aside, giving you four meters and then you've got the width of the carriageway as well. So that would wipe out around about twenty of their car parking spaces. There are also technical issues in terms of delivering. A road of a suitable design in into there. And it's made extremely difficult by that that change in levels, which would all to all intents and purposes. Counts against delivering a road of a suitable design in that area. So that that part of it was. That part of the scheme in effect became a bit of a non-starter in terms of an alternative access. So that's a large part why we're bringing back exactly the same scheme as we had last time. And other points to. To mention and pick up on, I won't go through it in detail because covering a report with this application does go into some detail on all of the points. On which members deferred consideration. Including the primary point which was for members to for sorry for the applicant to. Talk to the local residents and they talked to residents number thirty one and number twenty nine. And there was also a meeting held with the ward member to update the ward member on those discussions and the further discussions about the access. So this slide is again the layout slide. Shows the nature of the development, I've put this one up at this point in time. Mainly because just to highlight, remind members that. There are significant tree planting that goes with this proposals, there's thirty one extra heavy standard trees which go in. And then you see the hatched area which arched about across the back of three of the semi-detached houses. That's an area around roundabout where they're putting in a hundred whips or so. Now, obviously, not all those, as I said last time, not all those whip trees will survive, probably got a survival rate of about fifty percent. But there is substantial tree planting that 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 goes in there. Now, the other point which we had discussion on at some some length last time, which was the nature of the gardens. And the limited area which. Immediately to the back of the houses before the land starts to to rise. Now, that position hasn't changed. Those properties which are in a run of three. Generally have a much. More significant garden depth as it were, from memory ranging from around about seven to nine metres before it then goes into the embankment. It's plot seven and eight, particularly plot eight, which are at the far end of the cul-de-sac, which have a much more limited area. Their overall garden area because it incorporates the embankment is very large and much beyond our standards. They've only got small areas in terms of level access and level amenity space. In terms of the design of the proposals, you can see there that it's a very sort of traditional design, two and a half, three stories high. And picking up on some of the local architectural details, all the houses are of a very sort of similar form. So I should say that's, I think that's plots three and four, which form part of the run of three pairs and then the ones at the end, seven and eight. You can see they're just a very similar form of development. And now, one of the developments that has taken place since this application last came before panel. Was that we did consult with the nature conservation officer. And you'll see the nature conservation officer's comments summarized and the nature conservation officer essentially said. It's a positive that the embankment is being retained because that's the the feature which makes the biggest contribution to nature conservation and biodiversity. However, from their perspective, it would be better if that area became separated off as it were with no access into it. And be retained in its entirety as a single den entity. And that's the best solution from a nature conservation issue. So. And I would say that the the nature conservation officer put it in the terms and we quote him in the report, used the words maybe. So it wasn't a definitive, but they use the words maybe. And but I think, you know, from a common sense point of view, you know, you would look at that and you think, well, actually, yes, that would be to to main. Maintain something as a single entity without human intervention would be the best nature conservation biodiversity solution. But that doesn't necessarily mean it's the best planning solution, as it were. So ultimately, what we would do as officers is we would simply come back to, well, how does that suggestion sit with? Policy and what are the implications for the development? The implications to the development are that it would leave some of those properties with very short gardens and that would be an issue. For planning officers and we, I think we would go back and seek to renegotiate that scheme. However, when you look at the planning policy, the relevant planning policy and you judge the nature conservation officer comments against that. That means from an officer perspective, we're happy to stick with the original recommendation that it's a recommendation to grant planning permission. And I'll just take you through this very quickly because the 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 key policy is G G nine in the core strategy which deals with biodiversity matters and improvements. And that policy says, well, development will be required to demonstrate firstly that there'll be an overall net gain for biodiversity. And including a positive contribution to the habitat network through habitat protection, creation and enhancement. Second criteria is that design of new development, including landscape enhances existing wildlife habitats. And provides new areas and opportunities for wildlife. And finally, there's no significant adverse impact on the integrity and connectivity of the lead habitat network. Broadly speaking, parts one and two of that policy have the same sort of impetus and objectives, so I'll deal with those first off. So what this proposal does do is it retains. That most important element that contributes to nature conservation and biodiversity in terms of the mature tree bank. So that's maintained. There is substantial, so additional planting that's proposed or referred to extra thirty one extra. Heavy standard trees as well as general landscaping and the number of whip trees which are actually going to to go in there. I think we'd have to also have regard to the historical position that there was a car park there. And within that car park, that area wasn't fenced off so people could access it. So that in theory at least. That area has historically been accessible to to people. Then we've got some additional features which come off the back of this development, including bird and bat nesting features are going to be introduced. And we've also got recognizing the biodiversity nature conservation issue. And picking up on the conversations that and discussion that took place at last plans panel particularly. About how we manage that area and how we control that. So we put a condition on about landscape and woodland management as it were. And that would be to, well, it's detailed in the report, but matters such as providing a fence to. Clearly distinguish between that area and the immediate areas at the back of the property. To have a management plan which would include no lighting, no structures. Leaving of dead wood, et cetera, no introduction introduction of. Non-native species, those sorts of measures. So we do have some control through the imposition of 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 a condition. And there's a mechanism there that. The developer would need to pass that on and it would also be passed on to successors in title. So members would have to have regard to that. So in in that broader perspective and looking at the amenity of value that it also contributes to any future occupiers. The broader, rounder planning view as it were was, well, I don't think we're in conflict with policy G nine, can't say a conflict with policy G nine. And the benefits that it delivers, including it within the general wider amenity space outweighs the concerns on the biodiversity. Matter. So I think that probably covers all the points that I wanted to cover and hopefully. Reminds members of the of the nature scheme. So I don't think, well, we we don't have speakers, so it opens questions in chat.
Right, any questions for for David?
Yes, Barry.
The last condition you were talking about, has that been through legal to see how enforceable it is? Because again, our enforcement department are not the greatest in the world enforcing at things.
Well, what I could say is that obviously the reports as they goes through and the the. The conditions that you see in front of you are headline conditions, the reports that go through legal when they're checked. Now, if it gives members comfort, the precise wording of that condition, of course, we can agree with legal before it is. Well, in fact, we could do with the whole decision notice before it is issued. Any other questions? Councilor Anderson?
I'll let you off. Last time we discussed, I noticed you've got a condition on boundary treat, but last time we raised specific issue. I think it was myself and councillor Flint around the. It was proposed to be a fence between the site and the old car park, the car park that's existing. And I thought we suggested a stone wall that would be. Similar materials to the to the houses. I can't quite work out on the. Drawing here, is that now to be planted or is it still going to be a fence or have they taken apart suggestions of of stone or brick?
The discussion that we had with the developer was that that should be fenced and lands with a fence and landscaping. The discussion that we had with the developer was that that should be fenced and was a fence and landscaping. It wasn't a stone wall. But if members have a particularly strong view on that, we can revisit that with, we can revisit that with the applicant. The intention was for something of a nature of a close water defence with hedge planting along it.
Right, any other question? If not, comment. Constable Jenkinson?
Yeah, so just on hundred and nineteen, it's a bit difficult, this is two levels of document. So hundred and nineteen talks about the construction traffic. And obviously, there's concern from the residents of twenty nine that, about any impact of traffic on the foundations of that property. And I think there's going to be some investigations on that. Can we think about a ten mile an hour limit? I mean, it's a very short road, so probably ten miles might, mph might be feasible. The other point is on paragraph eleven, on the first page eighty four. It talks about existing drainage being, would be unaffected by the development, as the drains were now the responsibility of Yorkshire Water and would probably be incorporated in the proposed drainage scheme once built. And then it goes on to hundred and seventeen, the appendix, which talks about the foul water drainage. And what's, how that's dealt with? How do those two things relate to each other? Because I think we'd want to make sure it wasn't just probably incorporated into the responsibility of Yorkshire Water, but it was definitely incorporated. Do you understand what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. This was raised, yes, we did raise this with the developer. The developer came back and said that their first further investigation revealed that the drainage was owned or fell within the responsibility of Yorkshire Water, that any development that took place, there are regulations in place, as it were, to protect the integrity of that which fall with Yorkshire Water to actually enforce. So that was the position that we'd got to in terms of the position of comfort, that there were provisions in place to protect the integrity of that drainage. In terms of the access road, and I presume you just talked about that short stretch of access road between twenty nine and thirty one in terms of a speed limit. Yeah, it's probably something, well, I guess it's going to be very difficult for them to get up to much speed along there. But yes, I mean, it's something that we can look at either in the design or the management construction to minimise the speed of traffic, make it safe, but also to protect the amenities of the neighbours as well. And on that point, things that we talked about were actually putting up of sheeting either side of the access to suppress or protect the residents from dust emissions, et cetera, and no sort of air pollutants. Lisa?
Yeah, we can wrap that up into the construction management plan, which is one of the conditions. So we could specify that. But as I think David's already said, I think it'd be quite hard to get really high speed along there, given that you've got to turn in, it's a very short element of road. But certainly, we can make sure that it's, you know, would just be to maintain through the construction management plan.
Constable Sharp?
Just on the issue of the wall, it would seem that probably there's quite a bit of rainwater that could come down from the hill, hillside. And so if it was a fence with a gap underneath, or I don't know what the drainage would be like, but that's maybe a consideration.
Constable Sharp?
Thanks, Chair. I raised last time about the access between twenty nine and thirty one and the fact that there was no path. On page eighty three point eight, it says at the end, it was agreed with the council that a shared surface was appropriate. Is that the blocked paving that you mentioned?
Any other questions? Shall we move on to the comments? Constable Stevenson?
I think a stone or brick wall would be preferable as a boundary treatment. Further to my question. And the reason for that was, if you remember last time, we heard of comments about antisocial behaviour and the like in the car park. And I can see an obvious issue with a wood fence, which, A, is going to deteriorate over time. There'll be maintenance to that. And I can see in fifteen years' time, attending this site and seeing the wood as rotten or being kicked in or set alight or something, and the hedge has been cut through. So although it will be more costly, I think in terms of the aesthetics, a stone or brick wall in the same material as a house, et cetera, would look quite good and also serve a purpose in terms of amenity.
Anyone else? Constable Smith?
Just adding to Constable Stevenson's point on the stone wall, as opposed to a more fluid wall, shall we say. With it coming off a car park, there will be headlights evenings, weekends, winter time, and they could disturb the properties. So a stone wall or brick wall would stop that.
Anyone else? David would like to sum up, please, and reflect on some of the comments which were already made?
Okay, yes, thank you, Chair. So listening to what members are saying, we could certainly first off, agree the list of conditions with, and the wording, detailed wording with list of conditions with legal, that we would beef up the construction management plan to restrict speed along the access between twenty nine and thirty. And that we'd impose a condition on any planning permission granted that would require that boundary wall between the site and the car park to be of a solid material, as in brick or stone, to match the development.
Based on the summary provided, does someone wants to move the motion?
Could I have proposal and seconded?
Right, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Constable Smith.
Against?
Any abstention? Las Carri, thank you.
Right. Item ten, date and the time of next meeting is Thursday, the twentieth of October, two thousand and twenty two, at one thirty PM. Yeah, PM. That concludes the business of today's meeting. Thank you for all your attendance and contribution. I now declare this meeting to be closed.